I'd like to call to order the Regional City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 14th. The implication tonight, we call Mr. George Gunn, pastor, who's got his pastor of Ambrose Baptist Church. He's one of the associate pastors of Ambrose Baptist Church, 1302 Highway 29 Business Reevesville. And he happens to be my classmate. He's a member of the best class that ever graduated from regional high schools.
I beg your dear.
Today you may.
Amen.
You do first and foremost, give honor to Almighty God, to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, to the Spirit of God, who we pray will inhabit our coming together tonight. Let us go to the Lord in a moment of prayer. Father, we thank you now. We thank you for this moment. We feel your presence. And we ask that you would move in here, God. Touch us. We acknowledge that we are sinners saved by your grace. Things where you told us not to do, we did. Things you told us to do that we didn't do. And we ask that you would move from the front to the back. The prayer that Solomon asked of you, just give us wisdom to lead your people. That's what we're seeking after, God, that we may be able to lead your people, not just in worries, but in our hearts, the lifestyle that we have, the giving of ourselves to the community. Do it, Lord, not because we're worthy or because we can gain your attention, but because you love us. And you've given us this purpose. Rest of God, that you bless those that are less fortunate, those in war-torn countries, those in... Somebody right now doesn't have a roof over their head, doesn't have a floor under their feet. And we ask that you would touch, heal, and, Lord, put us in your potter's house. Make it mold us into what you'd have us to be for. We want to be fitted for the kingdom. We want to hear you say, "Well done, thy good and faithful servant. Enter into the joy of the Lord." Let the church say amen.
Good evening, nation.
Could we all rise to the place please?
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May me see. Councilman Festerman may have mentioned that he smelled a rat when he came in tonight. I don't think it's a rat quite. But there's something very special gonna happen tonight. It's all in your arms. We have Representative Pearl here. We have Commissioner Burger here. And others.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a member of council. We're here tonight to recognize Councilman Festerman. But I'm joined tonight by three Rockingham County Commissioners. I'm gonna ask them to come forward and maybe say a few words before I get started. Commissioner Burger, Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Hawke.
It is with great pleasure that, on behalf of the county commissioners, I thank you for the years of service to the community. And everybody reaches a point in life that it's time to spend time with family and friends and just enjoy your retirement. I know you've retired from other professions, but you've continued to serve this great community. And so, on behalf of the county commissioners, I just want to thank you for that service for many years for this community. Thank you.
I bet 25 or 30 years ago, you never thought you'd be in this position. I've been here for 53 years. I met James Festerman for the first time when I was in grade school. We come to the police department to tour it, and I believe you were a lieutenant or a captain at that time. And he come in and took up some time with us. Since that time, I've gotten known very well and done a fabulous job serving the city of Reesville. Your time as police chief and then your time as councilman. And I appreciate your dedication and service to the city, and I wish you well in your future endeavors.
Let me just say, before the next steps up, I will forgive all you commissioners, but I will not give Commissioner Powell. I had breakfast with him this morning. He didn't tell me anything about it.
So let me set the record straight. At breakfast this morning, I didn't know anything about it.
Again, we do appreciate your service. I got to know Mr. Festerman as a councilmember and Salvation Army worker. And he truly cares about the community. And so, we appreciate your heart and we appreciate your concern for the community. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, commissioners. Before we get started, the first thing I feel like I need to do is apologize. Because I'm gonna refer to you and read some things about you, and I'm gonna refer to you by your full name. And I've known you for 30-plus years, and I've never called you anything but chief. And so, it's a little awkward for me to say Festerman or James. It really is. But on behalf of the North Carolina General Assembly of State, North Carolina, I want to say greetings and congratulations on your accomplishment. My colleague in the Senate couldn't be here tonight. I talked to him today. He wishes you congratulations on your achievements and everything that you've done, not only for the city of Reesville and Rockingham County, but for the state of North Carolina. You have many positions to be at the state level, and we thank you. So the first thing I got for you is I want to present you a representative statement. And we're going to...I'll just get started. It's North Carolina House of Representatives Certificate of Acknowledgement and Congratulations. This is where it's James Clintor Festerman, started as an officer with the regional police department in 1963, and rose to the ranks becoming the regional police chief in 1983, serving until his retirement in 1997. And where it's James Clintor Festerman led the regional police department with integrity, candor, and dedication to the citizens under his watch. And where it's James Clintor Festerman graduated from the FBI National Academy in 1997, and went on to serve multiple state law enforcement associations. And where it's James Clintor Festerman continued to serve the community by serving as mayor of the city of Reesville from 2005 until 2013, and later becoming the regional city councilman from 2015 to 2023. And where it's James Clintor Festerman has been recognized for his distinguished service with the honor of the longleaf pine, and his combined experience accounts for over 60 years of service to this community. And where it's James Clintor Festerman and his late wife, Hook Priscilla, had two children, a son, Todd, and a daughter, Michelle, blessing them with four grandchildren, but delighted for their poppy. And now for this 14th day of November in the year 2023, I, Representative Averyus Pearl Jr., acknowledge the exemplary service and extend his sincere congratulations and appreciation to James Clintor Festerman on this occasion, the retirement from the city of Reesville. Congratulations, Chief. And we're not done yet. The second thing that I want to show is a gift for you, a Florida North Carolina House of Representatives Certificate of Acknowledgement. On the 14th day of November in the year 2023, North Carolina Representative Averyus Pearl Jr. presents this North Carolina state flag flown over the North Carolina state Capitol on Friday, May 5th, 2023, to James Clintor Festerman on his retirement to the city of Eden. Thank you very much, Chief.
They may call you representative, but I call you chief. We've been doing it a long time.
Well, I got two hands, and I need both of them. Let's see what we do here. Thank you. How about we give this to Angela? One last thing I'll say, Chief, before I sit down and turn the mic over to you for your comments. On the personal level, I've known you for a long time, probably 30-plus years. And I appreciate that professional relationship as a colleague, as a law enforcement officer, but also appreciate, and appreciate much more than you let me know, that personal relationship that we developed. So thank you very much. A lot of my success, you have had a part in. So thank you very much.
Very kind. My car's only so bad.
I just have to personally thank you for the most wonderful thing that's been in my life is to work for the city of Reevesville, and you've had the whole cause of that. Leading me at the YMCA.
Long time ago.
Getting me involved in the police department. And also sending me to the FBI National Academy. And also even being an influence for me to run for city council. And also, my boy, right now, is in law enforcement. He's in the federal law enforcement. And so, it's because of you. And I thank you that you've always been there to be a friend. I appreciate you, man. I appreciate you.
I'm blown away, obviously, and very rarely in my shorter words. You know, I've been doing somebody, I've been doing it for 60 years. Does that mean I get 60 minutes a night, Mayor? I promise you, I will not be talking 60 minutes. But this is a special night, and I'm very much... You should have given me some notice. I could have had some prepared remarks. I'm blown away, but... You know, to sit here and see my beautiful family, my girlfriend, all of these people mean so much to me. I've been so blessed to have a great family support. I apologize for not being there at some of these ballgames, some of the things that you did. But I truly, truly love you. Let me deviate from that, just so I can tell you a little story. Eight years ago, well, actually 10 years ago, my wife and lover, fifty years, passed away. Soul passed away. And I was lost for about three years, and then I had a great find. I found Vicki Austin, who we share a lot of time together now, and she's the love of my life right now. But to tell you the story, you might find it a little bit amusing. When I was being sworn in on the city council eight years ago, I had not told my daughter that I had a date, that I had a girlfriend. And Angela made arrangements for Michelle to come in here that night. Vic was sitting this way, even my grandson sitting right here. And I was up here, and I'm like, "God." I said, "God, what am I gonna do?" I went down and talked to Vicki. I told Vicki, I said, "Michelle's in the house." And she said, "What are you gonna do? Go out the back door?" I said, "If you go, I'm going with you." But it really, really worked out great. And the follow-up to that story was that my future son-in-law was there with us the same time. He spent the night with him. Next morning, I got up early and was having coffee with him. And I asked him, "How's it going?" He said, "Michelle meeting my girlfriend." And his exact words were, "I wouldn't plan on double dating anytime soon." But we've, since that time, we've double dated a lot. Gosh, I tell you what, I know all of you sitting out there can think about how much the family means to you. The family means a lot to me and also the city of Reesville. I've had the good fortune to be here a long time, and I wish I'd had time. If you think of 60 years, I'd had time to prepare for tomorrow. But it's just been a real blessing. I know that the city, they've given me more than I've given them. I feel so blessed to have had the opportunity to see so many folks develop and become outstanding law enforcement officers. And some of them become outstanding councilmembers. Thank you, please. And it's just to work with this group of people. I'm really excited about the new councilmembers coming on. I think the city's best days are ahead of us. We're gonna work together. We're gonna make... I'm happy to see those two gentlemen back in the back. Later on, I'm sure they'll be recognized, but I'm sure that they'll be a fine addition to our city, and they will lead us. The best is ahead of us. I don't know. I guess I'm rambling, but I want my family to stand up and just stand up for a second, if you would, please. And just, Todd, you know this, Todd. Go ahead. Get your sea more, get your fish more, sir. Good for me. This is my grandson, who's at UC Charlotte. You got anything you wanna say, buddy? I'll bet you this one does have. So this is Betsy. Betsy, anything you wanna say?
I'm just really proud of you.
These guys enjoyed the Carolina Duke game immensely, so did I tonight. Okay, and my love of my life, one of my loves of my life. She's been a really great, great source of inspiration for me, and a great mother, and just a great person to have in my family. And Ron, we're so proud that he'll be a part of our family in the near and future, we hope. The city of Reesville has been so, so kind to me. It's given me opportunities beyond my imagination. Most of you know, I came up off of Wall Street with a high school education. But the thing I think that I'm most fortunate for, I had good Christian, God-fearing parents who taught me, and I didn't always do what they taught me to do, but I knew I should be doing the things they taught me to do. But so, I'm very fortunate with that. Tonight, I look out here, and I'm not gonna start naming people. I'd be in serious trouble, because I'd forget some people. I have some folks that came all the way from Rocky Mountains, people from Eden. We got the Eden people in the house. How about that? Just all kinds of friends that have been so supporting me over the years. What else should I say? I love all of you. You've loved me over the years and supported me. And I'm not going anywhere. I'll still be around, but I look forward to working with our new councilmembers. I feel they're gonna do a great job. And may God continue to bless the city as it has in the past. I see so many people out there, but I just gotta recognize one guy. If he will step in... Kelly, if you will step in, please. Kelly Alden. Kelly and I worked together a long, long time. We flussed a lot. We had a lot of fussing. But he was really just a good, became a super, super good friend. We were not friends when I first went to work with him, but we later developed a friendship, and it's been endured for the last forty-some, maybe 35 years or so. We just, I'm just so fortunate to call you one of my friends. You're welcome to say anything, Kelly, if you want to say something.
I'll only get it out there, I'll put it out. I would say that you are one of the great blessings in my life.
Thank you. And I look around here, and I see so many people. It's been the great blessings of my life, and I just so indebted to you. I guess with that, Mayor, I guess we're ready to go to work, aren't we?
Well, through, guys.
It wasn't 60 minutes. But I love all you folks. I love you deeply. One of the things I've said, and at some point in time, I may have to correct this statement. I've had the good fortune to work with seven city managers. And I've told every one of them, maybe sooner or later, we'll get a good one. We never had a good one. I think we got a good one this time. I see my preacher out there. Well, I appreciate you coming tonight. Ralph and I have a little thing going on. I want him to preach my funeral, but we don't know who's gonna go first. I see all my folks out here. So I'm gonna sit down and go to work. So God bless y'all. Y'all going home now. Mayor, I apologize. I didn't go along with what you made of Fisher. Doesn't she look like me? While he's doing that, when my daughter was young, I'd tell, this girl here, I'd say, I'd tell her she looked like me, and she'd start crying.
Before people start to leave, could I get you all to repeat after me? Thank you, James Festerman.
Thank you, James Festerman.
For 60 years.
For 60 years.
Public service.
Public service.
To the city of Reevesville.
To the city of Reevesville.
The city that he loves.
The city that he loves.
Thank you all.
Amen.
Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. There has been an addition to the consent agenda, approval of a resolution to adopt updated compliance plans for CDBG infrastructure projects. Does anyone here like to have one of those items pulled? If not, do we have a motion for a consent agenda? Do we have a motion out of seconds? Any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Next thing on the agenda, we have public hearings. First one, consideration of conditional rezoning requests to rezonate a vacant parcel located off South Park Drive, specifically Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 173833 from residential 20 R20 to conditional zoning residential 12 CZR12. Belmont Estates LLC submitted the petition, docket number CZ2023-02. The planning board voted to recommend denial of the application, but the request automatically goes before city council for consideration in closer one, Jason Horrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, State Man, Kenny Mann. Belmont Estates LLC has petitioned to rezone a vacant parcel located off South Park Drive. That's Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 173833 from residential 20 R20 to conditional zoning residential 12 CZR12. This is an area of 44.09 acres. A conditional zoning request amended the zoning map with site-specific conditions incorporated into the amendment. This allows the developer to place voluntary conditions on the land with the intent of restricting allowable uses allowed within the new zoning district. The applicant is to choose which of the allowable uses are allowed for this district. In this case, it's R12. And they apply to a close-up on the land, so they get to choose which uses are allowed in that district to restrict it to. So nothing else, except for what's on their application, will be allowed in the zoning district. The applicant has requested to allow only townhomes as well as a development condition providing a connection to the JC Park Greenway. So they would connect JC Park Greenway to their sidewalk system from the cul-de-sac outlined in their plan. No other use conditions have been requested by the applicant, and all other development standards for the R12 zoning district shall apply. The applicant has provided a conditional zoning master plan as required by the ordinance that should be in your agenda packets. The planning director is authorized to approve minor changes to the site-specific vesting plan. However, major changes must go before the city council for approval. Those are things like relocating an entryway or exitway, a change of use. Those kinds of things have to be approved by council. Stat can all through those. Approval of the rezoning request and the attached concept plan does not imply construction approval and only vests the right to the requested permitted and development standards. Basically, just allowing them to build the project. It doesn't imply construction approval in any way. Those permits have to be obtained afterward. The planning board unanimously voted to recommend denial of the proposed conditional zoning application. The board's decision was based on issues with the site design, including the two entryways on South Park, traffic concerns, and lack of single-level units. But that's all based off the minutes from the planning board meeting. These are not what you would call land use concerns. They're more construction-oriented concerns. So no issues were brought up as far as land use issues with townhomes and the local family, that sort of thing. Another thing that came up at the planning board meeting that I wanted to address was my personal qualifications to speak on these sorts of matters. To start with, I'm your Director of City Planning. So you trust me, make recommendations on projects that they comply with the plans that you've adopted. So that's my job. Also, I'm certified from the University of Cornell in commercial real estate development. Also, I've completed the University of Oklahoma Economic Development Academy. So I completed that program, all of which had real estate development components. So if you see those qualifications relevant to some real estate matters, thank you. We've discussed the history of this parcel extensively. It was previously zoned, traditionally used R12 back in 2006. And then it was rezoned back to R20 in 2021. The 2006 project did include townhomes. So that precedent was kind of set there to allow some townhomes in this area as a part of the previous project. Townhomes are not apartments. Apartments are units located on single lots, and they're operated by a rental management company, whereas townhomes are bought and sold individually. You own the land under your townhome. It's not a rental unit up in apartment blocks. And also regarding like prices of housing, the State Fair Housing Act Incorporated, North Carolina General Statute 41A, is unlawful for land use decisions to deny proposed development based on the cost defined. Therefore, council cannot make, cannot by law make decisions based on the cost of townhomes being less than those of purchasing single-family homes. So that's basically saying that we can't deny projects at a certain rate if they're at being lower cost than buying a single-family home by law. As far as the traffic concerns for this rezoning go, staff has required the developers to provide a traffic impact analysis, TIA, to determine the impact of this development, to get the current traffic count on South Park Drive. They provided, the TIA to us, who reviewed it. And based on the traffic count, they provided South Park Drive as well of the lowest pass to 10,500 vehicles per day. This is consistent with the 2001 count numbers from our therapy plan that was done back in 2001. So, and it's also consistent with the latest numbers that the police department did when they were addressing citizen concerns regarding speeding on South Park Drive. So we have no reason to believe that these findings are anything but consistent with our own data as they presented it. Multifamily housing does not reduce property values. Townhomes are the new start of homes and workforce housing. Income has not kept up with inflation, inflation for the workforce or those on... Income has not kept up with inflation, inflation for the workforce or those on social security. Meaning that what you could buy twenty years ago as a starter home, you're gonna pay for a townhome now. The cost of that single-family home you paid, you know, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars for. Thirty years ago, you're gonna pay half million more. So townhomes are the new starter homes, unfortunately, where we are with inflation and so forth. Environmental concerns, there is a floodway, flood plain on the eastern portion of this lot. And the developer has proposed to not encroach into that area, so they are preserving that as open space in their plan. So that will preserve some open space in the eastern portion of the lot. So it's not going to wipe out the entire forest area. There will be forested open space on the eastern portion of the lot. As I said before the planning board, there's a finite amount of developed land in Reevesville. And many of the large parcels on the outskirts of the city do not have access to water or sewer. This increases the cost to extend infrastructure into time of development. It leaves the city into what we call infrastructure debt. To extend water and sewer to these parcels that are far out, to keep things inside low density, but increase density on the outskirts. So it's not sustainable, what you call sustainable development. And once the finite amount of land within the city boundary is exhausted, you've developed all of it, you're at the mercy of annexation, voluntary annexation. From a long-term planning perspective, the best option for future growth be increasing the density and growing inward. As opposed to relying on large parcels on the outskirts to come in through your developments. You want to grow inward, increase the density, and maximize what we have for future growth. The project aligns with Goal Number Three of the Reevesville Land Development Plan to expand housing. This includes expanding the housing stock and providing a variety of housing options that are attractive and affordable to people of all income levels. This was a directive that council gave staff in the land development plan. That's what we operate based off on, recommendations based off of the directives that council gives us in the plan. We interpret them, you know, as well as we can. The proposed development provided was been done as a missing mill housing, meaning going back to what I said, with townhomes being in the starter range of homes. The carver is located in growth management area number three of the land development plan, which is primarily to be used for residential development. The proposed conditional zoning is in line with surrounding land use as a residential development. By the reasons I previously stated, the rezoning is consistent with the Reevesville Land Development Plan. It's reasonable and in the public interest. The planning staff recommend the proposed conditional zoning application be approved. I'll be glad to answer any more questions.
Any questions, Mr. Jason?
Thank you, Jason. I understand, I know that at the planning board, one of the biggest concerns was the traffic.
Yes.
So you gave us the figures about the traffic in 2021?
Two thousand one.
Two thousand one.
That was the therapy plan.
So do we know that those, both of those traffic counts were done on the same days of the week, the same time of day? Because that would make a lot of difference on that count.
Well, obviously we don't know exactly where they were stayed back in 2001, we just know the traffic count that was before. So as far as like that location, we couldn't, you know, tell exactly where the traffic started in 2001.
Could you tell us how, what span of time that traffic count was done?
The plan only cited the traffic count. I don't recall if it had the times, I would have to review it again. I don't recall if it had a specific time period that they made the counts.
Do we know what area they counted in?
South Park Drive. So it says, "South Park Drive from freeway," and I can't remember what the cutoff was, but it was along South Park in this area.
Any other questions, Mr. Jason? We'll start the public hearing at six thirty-four. All right, developers speaking for.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name's Andrew Wallace, and I represent Belmont Estates LLC, which is the developer and owner of Belmont Towns. And I first want to begin by acknowledging, you know, from my perception, there's three stories here. The story of the city of Reevesville, which y'all, this land has been a part of since its inception. There's the story of the neighborhood, which in many respects, it's been a part of the neighborhood for some of the folks that are here for one to two generations. And then my story is that I was part of this beginning in 2006. I've been a part of it for eighteen years, and I have the intention of developing that, and I'll take you into that timeline here shortly. But I think that the thing that I'd like to highlight, you'll see in the presentation, is that I mean, we're gonna describe the project, we're gonna describe the neighborhood concerns, we're gonna describe the economic impact and benefit that this project has. And then we'll take a, we'll get into a little bit deeper dive. And I've got two gentlemen here with me, one from, Remy Kemp, Traffic Consultants, that can like go deeper dive into the traffic question issues he might have. And then Tim Shaw with Hagan Engineering, who is the lead engineer, could engineer a record in the site plan development and stormwater runoff, roads, infrastructure within the development. So we hope we've got a group here that can answer your questions and.
Would you pardon me just for a second, ladies?
Sure.
If you mind speaking up, we got a lot of folks in the audience who like to hear you, and I think it probably doesn't need to hurry if you would.
Say better. So let me start off by sharing with you the, as you can see on your screen here, the development within the city of Reevesville. It's one of the larger pieces of land in that Reevesville corridor. And then again, our team, which I introduced the first couple of gentlemen, but Belmont Estates, I represent Belmont Estates, the developer, the engineer, Hagan Engineering, who does a fair amount of work with you all, I believe, as well as in the city of Reevesville. And then Remy Kemp and Associates, Chase Smith, who's a traffic consultant. There was a question at the planning board meeting about our contractors. And while we have not signed contracts, we've been working with them in the development process. The site contractor is Cable Enterprises, which is based out of Brown Summit, but a, I believe he lives here in Reevesville. The owner does. And then the builder is DR Horton Homes. Again, we haven't signed the final contract with them. I know they're doing some other work here in Reevesville, but we're one of the largest home builders, if not the largest home builder in the United States, doing over eighty thousand homes of single-family and multifamily projects. So we feel like we've got a good team, a strong team, a financial workload team. The history of the project, as I mentioned, there's three stories and three histories. I'm gonna describe my history with the project. And that began in February fourteenth of 2006, where we formed a partnership with a couple of gentlemen from the Reevesville area and two other outside folks. I personally was in Florida at the time, but a resident of Durham and Hillsborough right now. We did get conditional zoning approval in 2006 for R12. And that was for multifamily and single-family homes. We developed construction drawings in 2008. And as we all know, or some, most of us know, that in the fall of 2008, there was a significant downturn in the economy. So the project got mopped off for a while. The next item was the, we lost some partners due to attrition. They made an elective to follow out and assign their interest to myself and one other gentleman. And just as a couple of years ago, that fourth gentleman elected to sign his interest to me, maybe me, to sole ownership. The, I reformed a partnership with another developer that brought me into the DR Horton Homes. That was a couple of years ago, in which we had to rezone to R20, I believe, conditional. And then the other partner and I parted ways completely, but I was still in partnership with DR Horton at the time. And then last, along with that, we had the R20 rezoning, which was, I believe, at this meeting two years ago. And then due to some demand and some requests from several people within the community and DR Horton, they wanted to take the density up to approximately two hundred homes. And so we decided to come before you at the planning board and you all to try and rezone that to allow, which was originally a hundred and forty-one homes, now up to two hundred, although it is zoned for, I think, four hundred plus homes under the R12, but we're not, we're capping it at two hundred, based on the density. Next, we've got, I want to go through some of the updates. You can see here the style of home that DR Horton is proposing. This is a fourplex. There is a sixplex version of it, so it'll be a mix of fourplexes and sixplexes. As we, I go through the next few pages along with my teammates here. We're gonna address the city of Reevesville Land Development Plan, which Jason's already touched on. We're gonna address some of the neighbors' questions and concerns that we heard at the planning board meeting. And then I want to share with you our perceived financial impacts to the community, which I think will bring a real benefit to you all, to the neighborhood, and to the project itself. As Jason mentioned, this project falls in line with the Goal Three, which is increase overall housing stock, expand housing options with focus on developing more high-end housing, multifamily housing, and market rate senior living, senior housing. I did want to make a comment at this point that there are four projects, development projects, in the city of Reevesville right now that I'm aware of. There may be more. One is just really down the street that's, I don't think has been brought before you, but it's an apartment complex development. It's probably got two hundred fifty, two hundred and seventy-five units. There's another project off of Liberty Road that's slated to have four hundred and fifty homes, single-family homes, several of those. And I'm not sure, I did speak with DR Horton, there will be single-level, single-family homes, and that could fulfill that product mix or that product. And then there's another one, Sherwood Lane, I believe, that's got another, I'm not sure of the number, but another single-family home development. So this, as Jason mentioned, this does fit in the mix. And it's really, it's tough for a developer to integrate single-family and multifamily unless there's a large, large swath of land. And this being forty-four acres, it felt like it really kind of lent itself to the townhome-specific development, knowing that, again, there was an interest in single-level townhomes, but we feel like that's being taken care of over on Liberty Road. So to provide that supply for the demand, the growing demand for senior living, single-family, single-level. Next was the infrastructure growth, improve roads where needed to support traffic.
Now, if you just for a second.
Yeah.
How do you plan, what were you saying about meeting the demand for the single-level? Is that in the future, was your plan?
No, that's with the Liberty Road project, which DR Horton is.
It doesn't affect your plan now?
Right, right. So, and then objective four point one is improve roads where needed to support traffic in new development and redevelopment areas. Then objective four point four was expand and improve alternate transit options. We touched on those with Chase, who's with Remy Kemp. And then Goal Five is Reevesville will support active living and recreation for preservation of natural resources, improvement and expansion of its parks and trails, and enhancement and maintenance of its indoor and outdoor recreational facilities. One of the parts of our land is, as Jason was mentioning, on the eastern part of it, we've got proposed eleven acres of the forty-four that will be, we're pursuing a, should this project be approved, pursue a conservation easement along the trails in the Creepe area. So, which can be utilized for trails, but it is protected for wildlife, flora fauna, and the chance to connect the Greenway Trail that already exists around JC Park. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Tim Shaw, who's with Hagan Engineering, and he's gonna discuss the stormwater and the layout of the homes, et cetera.
Hi, my name's Tim Shaw, and I'm with Hagan Engineering. And it's already been discussed a little bit, but just wanted to give you a quick overview of the plan. The development is accomplishing a hundred and ninety-four total units. It's a combination of fourplex and sixplex townhomes. And as you can see, there are three different stormwater detention spaces on the project. These will be designed to accommodate Reevesville's stormwater management scenario. And therefore, we will have to slow down water to obtain your storm event, to prevent any kind of downstream flooding for that storm event. And we also have to analyze and ensure during the worst-case flooding scenario, our pond will not fail. As was mentioned, that area that is attached and shown in red is a proposed environmental conservation area. This is all wetlands and flood area. But we are purposely leaving that untouched in an attempt to, one, preserve wildlife in that area, and two, prevent any kind of development constraints that could impact the development. Additionally, there will be trails that will be extended through there, and on the end of our cul-de-sac will also connect to the park with the connection to that Greenway. During the public hearing, there was a few main concerns that came up, so I wanted to kind of go through each one line by line and make sure everyone understands how we came upon the design. As mentioned already, the stormwater concerns are being helped or managed through the use of three different ponds on site. We'll have to get the necessary road control permits and also get approval by the city of Reevesville for this pond, before it can be built. Next was the environmental concerns. As mentioned, we will be provided by an easement and help prevent us from ever developing in that area. And I just wanted to kind of harp on the point that our development is only twenty-five percent fertile, so it's a very environmentally conscious plan in the attempt to really not have a strong downstream impact and to kind of create environment that's not gonna disturb the existing area. Additionally, it was thought of that people were concerned that while driving on South Park Drive, this might be a bit of an eyesore. I guess our first response to that would be that we're trying to provide a very high-level product that's gonna look good and be a good thing that the community's proud of. But additionally, there is a fire sixty-foot setback off of South Park Drive, so we can't build within that. And secondly, we'll provide a street buffer that's required by the city of Reevesville, so. Additionally, multiple access points off of Reevesville, or off of South Park Drive is a product that's a traffic concern. This was a requirement brought upon us by the Fire Emergency Services as part of public works review. This is done in the intent that if one driver has some sort of accident on, and fire emergency vehicles can still access the site. This is unfortunately the only spot that our site fronts that road, and therefore, in order to meet the city requirements, we need both of these access points. But as Chase with Remy Kemp will discuss, we don't feel that there is a traffic concern associated with that, and I'll let him delve into that further. Additionally, density is a main concern. Obviously, you don't want to provide too much traffic on that road. But as we're mentioning, this site technically with that zoning can have a much higher density of four hundred units if we were just to get a plain rezoning. So by doing a conditional zoning, we're restricting ourselves to townhomes and to a hundred and ninety-four units. And that can't be changed without any sort of rezoning again. That kind of falls into that conditional zoning comment. And the last thing we want to mention was it's thought of of how we're gonna maintain. this product, make sure it looks good in the future, as people brought up that what if people wanted to rent these out, and there will be an HOA. Obviously, the terms of that HOA would be brought upon later as D.R. Horton actually built these, but that will be done, and that can be part of this rezoning. But those are the manages we have come up, and I'd be happy to take any questions you guys may have for me.
I know I've been part of an HOA. The HOA will be formed after it's completely sold out. At what point, at what point in time does HOA become effective or become involved?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but as we submit plans initially for the design review, that HOA has, those HOA documents have to be submitted along with it, so it's part of the design, plan, and review process.
May I answer that?
Yes.
So, with their final plan that they would submit to us after we approved the site plan, the final plan, they would submit their HOA bylaws to us, and that would be taken along with the HOA backlog and the final plan that they submit to us. So they would submit those at project completion?
Do we, is there, do we have to approve HOA bylaws?
We don't approve the bylaws, we just take them with the final plan, their establishment plan. They would submit it with the final plan. Excuse me?
How is the HOA managed?
Typically, HOA is, I mean, I know my neighbor has one, it's usually like the board that's elected that serves over it, and they, I know the one that I live in, they contract with a property management company that kind of, they use submit your architectural requests. They're just a little bit different if you're a townhome. So I'm guessing that they would have some sort of, the board would contract with some kind of company who would do, there are management companies that actually do HOA management forward, so they can actually contract with someone. That's typically how it's done in my experience in my experience.
Thank you.
Any questions? Project, sit back down. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for me? If not, well, thank you, Tim Shaw.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We do have Chase with Randy Kemp, who's going to talk about the traffic.
Good evening, Chase and Randy Kemp Associates. As Jason said, we completed the traffic impact analysis for-
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Tell me your background, please.
My background?
Yes.
All right, so I've been with Randy Kemp Associates since January 2014. Randy Kemp Associates is a traffic engineering firm. Our specialties are traffic impact analyses, roadway design, signal design, that kind of thing. So I've been with Randy Kemp since 2014. I started out in our Raleigh office, six months before that, as I was finishing up my civil engineering degree at NC State. And I have lived in the Winston-Salem area and worked with Randy Kemp since January 2014. I've been working on traffic impact analyses exclusively since then. So we've completed the traffic impact study for this development in coordination with the city, and as Jason said, it's been submitted to the city, been reviewed by the city. And I do have one, one simple slide that I can get a little bit into what a TIA, or Traffic Impact Analysis, does. So in coordination with the city, the city sort of tells us what they want us to look at in terms of a study area for the project. We go out and collect traffic counts during the peak hours of the day, which are usually on a typical weekday, which would be Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, during the peak period, which are typically considered 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. and then 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So folks going to schools, folks coming back from work. So we collect that traffic data, we project it to a future year using a growth rate for the surrounding area. In this case, we use 5% to be conservative. A couple of reasons for that. Part of it was the low volume that we found on South Park, but we just wanted to beef it up a little bit to get a good idea of what kind of impact this development would have. So we get our, what we call a background base level with those projected volumes, and we add the development traffic on there, which you can see that the table I've got provided for 194 units based on industry standard. It's anticipated to generate a little under 1,500 trips a day, and a little under 100 trips in the morning and just over 100 in the afternoon. And we put that through nationally-recognized software, it's called Syncro, spits out level of service and delay for us, based on all that data that we compiled. While we recognize that there are some cues and delays that happen during those peak times, especially in the morning, but the schools on both ends of the project, we don't anticipate that this, this project will add a great, great deal to that. And as I did add a table for, for the daily traffic volumes, and Jason sort of hinted at those 2,001 volumes that were collected, we went out and obviously did some daily data collection on South Park as well, sort of did it right along the front edge of the property, because that's where the majority of our traffic obviously is going to be condensed with those two access points. Currently, the two-way traffic volume there is about 2,600 vehicles per day. Standard for a, the table got cut off a little bit, but standard for a typical two-lane cross-section based on NCDOT planning standards is somewhere around 8,000 to 10,000, sort of an equation of how many driveways are on that roadway, even at that kind of thing. But I think the lowest number that we've got there for 10-foot lanes is somewhere around 8,500 to 9,000 vehicles per day. And as you can see, with the 2,600 vehicles per day that are on there now and the additional traffic that this is anticipated to add, we'd still be well below that, that capacity there. And I'll sort of leave my presentation at that and take any technical questions if anybody has any.
You don't want to have any more?
I'm not sure I fully understood it, I apologize. What, what is the current traffic count now? What is it?
The current traffic on, on South Park Drive along the front of the site is 2,600 total trips per 24-hour period.
If this is about-
It's adding about 1,600, so, sorry, about 1,500, so about 750 ins, 750 outs, over the course of the 24-hour period.
Any other questions? The next thing I'd like to talk about is kind of the economic impact of this project. And I'll start with the bottom, bottom portion of the slide. We anticipate our site development cost, which would be over the course of the next, assuming this was approved, most of that would occur in 2024, approximately $5 million. The housing construction, which is the D.R. Horton portion, is roughly $31 million, and that will take place over the next couple of years. It's a phased development. Probably with 200 units, we're looking at a three-phase turnover. But then stepping up to the, once it's done and in transition to being completed out, broke down the tax rate between the City of Reevesville and the Rockingham County using the current rates, and right now, you're, I'm paying roughly $6,000 for that parcel of property. Should we take it, should the value of those units, and we anticipate these units being sold in the 250 range, but conservatively, if they go, if the tax value was at 200, and you're looking at a Rockingham County tax revenue of 269,000, and a Reevesville tax revenue per year of 307, and then we'd go with 225,000 units if the value is established at that, 303,000 for Rockingham, 326,000 for Reevesville, and then if they're valued at 250, which is where we anticipate the sales price to be, we're at 337 for Rockingham and City of Reevesville for 384. That's somewhere between 9,500% and 11,860% increase from what you're getting right now, on top of the immediate construction impact through employment, you know, increase in whatever folks do while they're, while they're working on site, go to restaurants, stay in hotels. So that's really the impact. And I want to, I highlighted that at this point because I, I believe that, one, it fulfills, and this is in summary, it helps fulfill the land, land development plan that you all established in 2022, to increase that portion. And again, I've talked about the single-family on another project and apartments on another project, so this fits that townhome need roughly of 250,000, which is fairly affordable for most folks. We would enhance the quality of life of Reevesville's growing community and support economic growth for the city of Reevesville. Again, we've got a good portion of the project that's designated to go to being protected through a conservation easement. And then finally, increase the source of funding for community development through an increase in the property tax revenue and employment. And so, we're, we're looking at this not only from, from my perspective of being involved with it for 18 years, but I think from a neighborhood, you can take those funds, and I'm not here making any suggestions or pushing the approval, but those funds can be used for school expansion, it can be used for, for, for traffic re-signaling, for turning lanes, water, water and sewer extensions. So there's a big boom from, from the tax, tax revenue impact as well as the immediate impact. With that, if you have any questions, I will, other than that, I will close, but we hope you will consider voting to approve this project as we move on with the presentation.
Have a question, please. D.R. Horton, who will be the builder?
Like I said, we have not signed a contract, but we have collaborated with the city, we've collaborated with the site contractor, we've collaborated with D.R. Horton. Their, their, our density model is based on their, their units.
Can you specifically tell us of any developments you've done in Greensboro or within?
I can't name the specific ones, but they, I know that they have done quite a few, maybe you're aware of. Okay. Yeah, they're, I know they've done in, worked in Raleigh and Durham. I'm positive they've done some in Greensboro, I just personally can't name those.
I know driving through Greensboro, it seems like there's building everywhere, especially apartments and houses, so I just wondered if any of those that we might drive by would be in.
Yeah. We could certainly get you a set of developments to, to look at if you'd like, but like I said, they, they do, I think last year they did 82,000 homes throughout the United States and most, most metropolitan areas.
Thank you. What is the day the traffic count of South Park Drive is built to handle?
What day specifically were they on?
Were they handled, they're built to handle? What is the traffic?
Oh, that table, if you can barely see at the bottom, would be right around 8,500 vehicles per day would be the minimum, without having a specific calculation done, but that's based on NCDOT planning standards for typical two-lane roads, anywhere between 8,500 to 12,000, but a lower-speed facility like that would keep that, keep that volume lower.
Would your development include any sidewalks in the area?
There are sidewalks on at least one side of the road.
How about street lighting? Is that in part of the city's obligation, or do you do street lighting?
We will, we will put any required street lighting in, we'll put in required sidewalks, but we do, the D.R. Horton Development has mandates of a sidewalk, you know, on at least one side of the street. As well as the city requirements for trees, shrubs, buffer, et cetera.
Have you done a study lately to determine the interest in buying these townhomes?
D.R. Horton has done a market analysis, and they would not be pushing many of the developer to move the 200 units from 141 unless they felt like there was a demand. And again, two years ago, we were looking at the 215 range, and right now, it's been bumped up to about 250.
What is the square footage of the unit?
I believe 1469. I might be off 10 or 20, but it's somewhere 1470.
Could be a bath and a half, or two baths?
Yeah, three bed, two bath.
And do they all have a garage?
They all have a single-car garage. So parking, they're, they're designed for two cars for each unit, one inside the garage, one outside the garage. No street parking has been figured into it.
Any other questions? Just one point of question. What is the, what would the width of the street be inside the development?
I'm sorry, what?
What would the width of the street be inside the development? How wide would the street be?
Yes, and this is based on the City of Reevesville, she's standing. You can figure it out from the ground. Yeah, it's 34 foot wide, three.
34.
That's what we apply.
Any other questions? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against?
Mr. Mayor, I signed up for fellow comments, but it may get better, dear.
Only if it has something to do with this particular project.
Any does, would I be allowed to switch, or would you? Whatever you choose.
Well, if it has something to do directly with the, this project, and if it's against, that's what I'm asking for now.
I agree.
You can give your name, address.
Ms. Mayor, I'm Diane Parnell. I live at 220 Woodland Drive in Reevesville, been here for 52 years, love this town. Eons ago, I worked for Teresa Mahoney, who has sold real estate in this town for many, many years. I got the chance to sit and talk with her at Rocktoberfest. Because of our age, we're looking to downsize. We have a large home, but more than anything, we have three acres. Takes a lot to look after three acres. So I said, Teresa, what's happening? What can, where can I find to move to? She said, well, they've got a development they think is coming on South Park Drive. And I said, well, what do you think about that? And she said, well, it's a townhouse. I said, well, I'm not going to buy a townhouse. She said, well, you could put in an elevator. I said, well, I'm not going to buy an elevator and have an elevator put in. But, and when she told me it's on South Park, anytime I'm going from Town-Town to Freeway Drive, I look at my watch, because I don't want to add to the traffic that's already there. So I think it's a good idea to take a, a good look at what the realtors are saying about the saleability of these. I understand what he's saying about the developments being off of Fort Corry Road, I still call it Fort Corry, that being single, single-level homes, but how saleable would these homes be? Thank you very much for letting me speak.
So anyone else who'd like to speak again?
I'm Flip R.D. I live at 901 Central Drive. I just had a question. I'm confused by, when we were at the planning board meeting, it was my understanding that target market was senior citizens, retired, retired. And I didn't understand then, I don't understand now, how, if that still is a target market, how is that attractive to a senior citizen, you know, multi-level unit? So that's, that's one question I would have. I also have a question that, along those lines, is D.H. Horton did a market analysis. Has the developer read the market analysis? General question. And that's it. Two questions I have. I do, one other comment, D.H. Horton does develop significantly in North Carolina, so I can attest to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak again?
Hi, I'm Shirley McMichael, I live at eighteen thirty-eight South Park Drive, which is directly across from the property in question. And I also want to congratulate James on all his accomplishments. First off, at the beginning of the first meeting, we asked for an environmental impact study that was never forthcoming. We also asked for the developers' credentials and portfolio, when you're talking about a fifty million dollar project, two hundred houses, at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is fifty million dollars. You would need to see some success in other developments similar to that. The other thing is, at two hundred homes, Regisville hasn't sold two hundred homes in five years. We got four hundred on McCoy Road. So that's got, those are four hundred houses that can be sold. The other thing is, the traffic study is null and void, because it doesn't account for those four hundred house, four hundred houses being built. If the two exits on McCoy, some will come and turn right and left on Freeway, but the majority of them are going to come straight down South Park. So that study is, doesn't even look at that. With the environmental impact study, there are three different species of owls over there. There are two, I know at least two different kinds of hawks, multiple sound, songbirds, I know people don't care about that in development, but it is a part of our ecosystem, and it's something that we need to think about. So I'm not going to talk about the schools, because I've talked enough about that, but I, I am concerned about the infrastructure, I'm concerned about the sellability of these houses. We had asked in the other meeting, because older people, and I'm an older person, I don't want two-story, I want a one-story, where my bedroom's downstairs. Well, they're not going to have any of those. Okay, so that limits the people that can buy those houses. The other thing that I wanted, but I've got a couple of things, I had a lot of things on my mind when I was thinking about this, but, you know, the infrastructure has to be there. You've got four hundred houses here, two hundred here, we don't have the restaurants now, people are leaving Regisville because we don't have restaurants to eat at. We don't, you know, and, and, I don't know, there's just, there's a lot to think about. I, I can see where he held this land for eighteen years, he had it for sale, I think it was back in April of twenty-three for one point three million, was what it was listed on Realtor.com for. Now, and I do want to say, D.R. Horton has done a development in Summerfield. It's between one fifty, somewhere between, in the one fifty Church Street area, so you could certainly see that, he can put up a development in about six months. And so there's a large number of homes out there that have just been built. And that's all he has to think. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against? Name and address.
My name is Michael McCollum, fourteen eleven Freeway Drive, I'm a local Realtor, owner of McCollum Realty Group, been Regisville native, I've been selling real estate in Regisville Rockland County for the past twenty-six years. And I pulled some data just today, as a matter of fact, and there is good news on property values in the city of Regisville. I asked, do you know how many homes sold for over four hundred thousand dollars in the year of twenty twenty-one in the city limits of Regisville? Two. Went sold for four, seven, went sold for four, ten. Do you know how many homes sold for over four hundred thousand dollars inside the city limits of Regisville in twenty twenty-two? Two. Four hundred and twenty, went sold for four hundred and twenty-five, went sold for five, ten, so things are improving. Do you know how many are on the market and currently under contract and have sold in the city limits of Regisville between four hundred thousand and a million in twenty twenty-three? Eighteen. So things are improving. There are two homes that almost one borders this property, it's listed at eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, it's currently under contract, there's one that's only separated by one parcel, listed for five hundred and twenty-five. And then in less than a quarter mile from this designated site, there are two properties that have sold in the last three months, one for six hundred and twenty-five thousand and one for five hundred and one thousand. Well, what happens when you put two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes in the middle of your best real estate in town? It's going to pull the values of what's around it down. And I pulled the data just today, so as of today, twenty twenty-three, inside the city limits of Regisville, the number of homes between, I thought that they were going to be at three hundred thousand, I picked lower numbers, but between two hundred and fifty to three hundred and twenty-five thousand, fourteen. Fourteen homes have sold inside the city limits in that price range. In the year of twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, so if you're going to build two hundred homes, well, if they get a hundred percent of the market share of that price range, it'll take, you know, it'll take ten years. If they get fifty percent, it'd take twenty years. But in that price range of two fifty and below, if you watch the news and the big corporations like BlackRock, and we see a lot of these corporate rental companies, they will buy these homes. They will buy these homes, but by the year twenty thirty, they want to own fifty to sixty percent of the moderately priced homes. So they will get sold, but when you look on the tax records, the taxes, your check will be coming from Texas, Florida, Montana, they will not be, you know, homeowners of Regisville, North Carolina, they will be corporate investors, and it'll end up being rentals. And we know that the same developer that he mentioned, the apartments, you know, right there by the food line, you've already got two hundred and fifty-plus units, that same developer has already purchased the land, or is in the process of purchasing the land behind the food line and the junior high, and he's going to be able to build another three hundred apartments. So you're going to have five hundred apartments on one in the South Park, and then two hundred townhomes, that probably most of them will end up being rental properties. So we're going to be saturated with, you know, apartments, the townhomes are good, it's a good option, and Regisville does, is in great need of townhomes for seniors. We market Regisville as a retirement destination, but we don't have the homes. And I've mentioned the ones out on Liberty Road, well, that, that land is in the watershed, they have to be forty thousand square foot lots to build on, so you can't put four hundred homes on two hundred acres. They won't have the density that they're looking for, so there's, who's to say if any of those single-family, those single-floor homes will get built in? So I don't know, but could we see a show of hands, who would like to have two hundred townhomes built across the street from their house? My, my parents live in the neighborhood right across the street, any, any hands, you would like to have two hundred townhomes built across the street from your house?
I don't, I live in that area.
Well, we have one. Just one, just one person wants, but anyway, I just wanted to speak for, for those who can't, so thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against? Just give your name and address.
Uh, my name's John Harrison, and I live at twelve ten South Park Drive. I know that we, uh, we had a good meeting, a lengthy meeting with the, all of the homeowners and people in the community that are affected by this, and everything was hashed out and the planning board unanimously voted against it. I know, I was concerned with the project then, and I'm even more concerned with it now, after finding out that it is a D.A., uh, D.R. Horton, uh, would be a D.R. Horton project. They're not known for anything high in, uh, in the, in, from what I've always heard in the construction industry, is what, what I do. But while I was sitting here, went to consumeraffairs.com and checked D.R. Horton Homes Reviews, and they, they're a one-point-three star builder out of over fifteen hundred reviews. And I think that's something worth noting as well. And as far as the traffic, uh, like I said last time, traffic gets backed up a quarter mile to the South Park twice a day, past my driveway, so take it, take it. I don't know about the study, I just know about the real life in the South Park, so thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak against? If there be no one else, we'll close the closing hearing at seven nineteen. So any discussion, council?
We have just been given a wealth of information that we didn't have before we got here in our, you know, I mean, we had our, we had the information in our book, but now we just have so much more. I just don't think it's fair to ask us to make a decision right here tonight. I'd like to make a motion that we table this, maybe till after the holidays, till January, because I need more time to sit down and read every page of it, and I've heard from the community, and now I think it's only fair that we hear from the developer and everything that we've gotten here tonight, and then make our decision. But I make a motion, we table it till January.
Second.
Mayor, I'll second it, due to all the information that we received tonight, the information that we've been receiving for the last month. It is a life-changing situation for some citizens, and I think council needs to put more time into this, and come up with the best solution to try to make the best decision.
I concur with my fellow council members' comments. I would also, earlier, I'd like, if that motion is successful, I would encourage the developer to be, reach out, to continue to reach out with the residents of the area and make sure that they have a fully understanding of what he's saying to do. And also, off of this room, if this, this room, it's so desired to meet with us, so I would encourage the, uh, the community to reach out to the developer, and it should be a two-way conversation.
All right, we have a motion, and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Let me, can I ask what specific date this will be discussed? What is the January council date?
January ninth.
Did you make it, was it part of your motion?
No, it wasn't part of my motion, it should have been. I said January. I said January ninth, the city council. I would feel better about it. And I think that as a city councilperson, if I just made a decision right here tonight, I'm not sure that it would be the right one, but I need time to think about it and, and to take in all this information.
All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
I think all is coming out tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, ma'am, ma'am, council point of order, please.
Yes, sir.
I've never done this in my twenty-four-plus years on the city council, but I have family that's traveled a long way, as much for my support cries, and they're planning to do it for me, I've been told. You would be so kind, just excuse me for the remainder of this meeting, I'd be mostly dead to you. Imagine being cute.
You got my permission?
I'm not going away from anything, I just, my family's traveled a long way from all over the state, in fact, to be here tonight, so I feel you more.
That's the most important thing.
Thank y'all for your understanding, and to the folks out in Northern State, for your understanding, thank you. God bless you, all of you.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of a text amendment to amend Article Two, Section One, definition of Article Five, Section Two, Table of permitted uses, and Article Five, Section Three, notes to the Table of Electronic Gaming Operations. The permitted use of electronic gaming operations shall be allowed by Reich and Highway Business, H.B., zoning district with development standards, staff submitted the petition T. twenty twenty-three dash eleven, enclosed to Jason R.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, and Senator. The planning staff has petitioned to amend Article Two, Section One, definitions, Article Five, Section Two, Table of permitted uses, and Article Five, Section Three, notes to the Table of permitted uses of the Regisville zoning ordinance. There are three phases to this text amendment proposal. Phase one will remove game rooms as a permitted use. Phase two will amend Article Two, Section One, definitions, and Article Five, Section Two, Table of permitted uses, to distinguish electronic gaming operation as a new permitted use. Phase three will amend Article Five, Section Three, notes to the Table of permitted uses to add Note Forty-three, which shall define the development standards required for electronic gaming operations. Currently, the permitted use game room is defined as a commercial enterprise located in room or rooms equipped with electronic video mechanical games and the like, the principal use of which is to play such games and not playing pool, and allow game rooms to be permitted in the general business, neighborhood business, highway business, and industrial one zoning districts. You've probably seen some NFT gaming operations popping up around town, this is a new thing we haven't seen before. Cities around the triad have been trying to adjust to this, because they've been getting the same requests that we have. And because NFT gaming, which if you're not familiar with what an NFT is, it's a non-fungible token. That means that it's not cash prize, it's a token, like, there, there was a monkey picture that was going around the internet a while back, that someone sold on the internet for a hundred thousand dollars. So it's like a, it's a token that they take on, and put it on, like, the marketplace on the internet and they sell it, so it's not a direct cash prize, so the court has not ruled on whether this is what we call sweepstakes or not. It's still all tied up in the court, obviously, whenever there's a ruling that comes down, we will automatically apply, or comply with the court ruling on, on what they find with these NFC gamers. In the meantime, the use of electronic gaming operations shall be allowed by Reich and Highway Business, H.B. Zoning District with Development Standards. The definition for electronic gaming operations shall be read as follows, any establishment deemed legal by the state of North Carolina featuring one or more standalone electronic gaming machines, including but not limited to computers, gaming terminals, tables, and the like, that operate with or without gaming software to conduct or facilitate NFC gaming and/or gaming that is otherwise considered to be skill-based in nature and legal in the state of North Carolina. Development standards for an electronic gaming operation will include apartments for distance, separation, entrance orientation, visibility signage, the number of allowed gaming terminals slash machines, hours of operation, and prize and payout types. The text amendment request is consistent with the Regisville Land Development Planner Goal Number Two, Astronomical Economy, it's also good to try to comply with state laws as well if you can. And the planning staff recommended adoption of the proposed text amendment, the planning board unanimously voted to approve the proposed text amendment. I applaud that.
Any more questions, Jason?
I have none. Sounds to me like this is something that we talked about years ago, about the poker, about the poker machine, and we passed that, and then it got changed, and all those businesses had to go out of business, and we started all over, so are we, is this going to be a duplicate of that?
I don't know. It's hard, it's hard to say, I, I consulted with PD my whole way on this, since we got the initial request on it, and they still could not give me a determination that this is sweepstakes. And we consulted with their attorneys to determine whether NFT gaming is sweepstakes, but they would not even give us an interpretation on it. So therefore, we were kind of left to call the game room at this point. So what, what the court will decide, we'll see.
Thank you.
This is some kind of way to, for us to put it in a certain section.
Well, it's putting it with your more intense uses in highway business, and it's allowing it by rights, or we're not zoning it out, we're just putting it in a district where it would be more, among more intense uses.
Another question, have we had anybody asked about this, if they wanted this business to be here?
We've had around six, seven, several that are in general business, so if council approves this, the ones that are existing in general business will be considered not performing, legal, not performing. They'll be allowed to operate as long as, well, number one, the court doesn't rule it and PD doesn't shut it down. Number two, if they shut down for a period of six months, then... then whatever replaces them in that unit has to be conforming. And that's on their burden to prove that they are legal not performing, if not the city.
Will you go over the areas one more time?
Where they're looking. Right now, because game rooms are allowed in general business, most of them aren't in general business right now, which is the area that's kind of right outside of the Central Memphis District, down Scale Street, a lot of it, and kind of surrounding areas.
Thank you.
Don't go too much.
Any questions, do they have a question?
Well, does this generate any income for these? No, it's just a, it's just a little.
Okay, on the building, they're paying property tax, I guess. Beyond that, I wouldn't think so. I can't swear, but.
It's just entertainment.
Yeah, it's just gaming marketing.
Good, Jason.
Hold up. I'm just, I'm done, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking me that. Thank you.
All right, we'll open the public hearing at 7:31. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for the amendment? Is there anyone who'd like to speak against? We'll close the public hearing at 7:31 and a half. What's the pleasure of council? Mayor, I'm hoping that the motion that we approved, text amendment T 2023-28. Second. In discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next public hearing is consideration of a text amendment, Article 5, Section 2, Table of permitted uses to remove the special use permit requirement for dwellings permitted in commercial districts in the general business GB and highway business HB zoning district, and to amend Article 5, Section 3, special use to repeal the special use permit standards for dwellings permitted in commercial districts. Staff submitted the petition T 2023-12, enclosed to 3, Jason Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, City Manager. The plaintiff's staff has petitioned to amend Article 5, Section 2, Table of permitted uses to remove the special use permit requirement for dwellings permitted in commercial districts in the general business GB and highway business HB zoning districts. And to also amend Article 5, Section 3, special uses to repeal the special use standards for dwellings permitted in commercial districts. Staff has also petitioned to amend Article 5, Section 3, the notes to the Table of permitted uses to add Note 44, which shall provide new standards for dwellings permitted in commercial districts. The text amendment request to, the text amendment request consists of three parts. Again, it will modify the use table. It repeals the special use permit requirements and the standards, and it replaces it with a note, and it will be allowed by right. So no special use permit needed. The amended standards shall allow the following residential uses: Apartments, condominiums, townhomes, and two families detached dwellings. There is a required mixed-use component to any dwelling permitted under this use. A new commercial element will need to be provided, and not just residential, although the director is authorized to exempt this requirement at their discretion. Meaning that in general business and highway business, you would do a mixed-use development by right. You wouldn't need a special use permit to be residential as a component with it. But it's requiring it to be, have a mixed-use component, so there has to be a commercial element to it, unless staff exempts that requirement. Currently, the reasonable zoning ordinance allows dwellings permitted in commercial districts as a permitted use in the general business and highway business zoning districts with a special use permit. The primary purpose of the special use permit is to ensure the specific land uses that comply with the local zoning regulations. And it says that certain uses are only acceptable in some circumstances. However, what we're seeing now is that with shopping center developments and large commercial, we're seeing mixed-use components with those. Like, if you go several places in the region where you're going to see apartments right next to the, at the at-home. You're going to see apartments near the large office buildings, because you're seeing more mixed-use development. And it provides a good place for higher-density development as a part of the commercial use. And it cuts some red tape for development, which is always good too. The text amendment request is consistent with the reasonable land development plan and goal number 3, expanded housing. There's a considerable need for new housing in reasonable. I pulled our vacancy rate, we're at about 2% vacancy. That's not, not good. Your normal, your healthy vacancy rate is around 5%. That means you have a good supply of housing that's available to buy. We're around 2%, so very hard to find housing. By allowing dwellings permitted in commercial districts as a use allowed by right in the general business and highway business zoning district, we are able to ensure an expanded housing stock that is accessible to people of all income level and is attractive to both developers and residents. The plaintiff's staff recommended adoption of the proposed text amendment, and the plaintiff's board unanimously recommended that the proposed text amendment be approved. Glad to answer any questions at all.
Jason, you mentioned housing.
Okay.
Right off the top of your head, could you give us some indication of how much housing stock might be available that wouldn't require a substantial amount of cosmetic? Cosmetic?
Dilapidated housing, yeah. So there was a study done, and this is in our land development plan, I'll have to go back and read it, but there was a study done, I think it was in the early 2000s, on our housing stock. And it found that there is a significant amount of housing, especially on the northern portion of the city, that is dilapidated. It's older, it's desperately in rehab or that was one of our priorities in the land development plan, was to provide housing rehab. And we're doing some of that through our CPG grant right now. Also to provide new housing options, because as these homes continue to degrade, we're going to need other housing options to be competitive, to attract people to rent them, and provide for the existing citizens who would like to, you know, have a house, of course. So, and I mean, if you look at census data, you can see that the bulk of our housing development was built around the early 1900s. A lot, the bulk of it was built then. The last major subdivision development that we approved, like a major, when I say major, I'm talking like 50 lots or more was Carter Ridge. And in fact, basically, it was completed in the early 2000s. So we're looking at a shortage of large-scale housing. We have a lot on the table, it's just we're weighing on the planning developments at the time, you know, that way. So I think this is a great amendment, because this is very progressive. It's turned both of our commercial districts into mixed-use districts. You're allowing housing as a part of commercial development, and doing it by right. And it falls to our six standards for housing. So it allows a higher density that you can, that would be in conforming with the commercial use. So I'm a good candidate.
Any questions, Jason?
Mayor, Council, if I may, Mr. Hart, do you care to elaborate a little bit more? I know one of the things we've been tasked with as city staff is looking at our bureau ordinance that is, and making sure that we look at that red tape and look at ways to try and be more business-friendly. And I think this is an attempt to try and do that. And I appreciate the plaintiff's board taking this on and looking at this as well. Would you go maybe give a little bit more example of removing some of that red tape? It still puts parameters on it, but one thing that we have noticed as city staff as we move along through, you know, five development ordinance, is you'll notice that over the years, we've tended to put special use requirements on a lot of items that are already permitted. So this is just another attempt to try, it's not completely to remove all the red tape, but to just take that one layer where you don't have that conglomerate of us not being business-friendly. So will you maybe go a little bit to maybe talk about that?
Absolutely. So special use permits, in my experience, they act as kind of a deterrent, just to be honest with you. I mean, I understand that they're necessary for some uses, but we want to make sure that they follow procedure, and they are different. I'm not saying they're not. It's just for certain things that were in yesteryear a little bit more controversial, or things that might be a little bit more development regulation. I don't think that's the case anymore. And you can achieve the same end if you have development standards. And you have that standard, but they don't have to come all the way to the council. But they have to build quality development. But they don't have to say, oh, well, it's going to be three months, and I may or may not get this approval. You know, so it kind of eliminates some uncertainty and makes you more attractive to businesses. Because one of the big things with it is eliminating uncertainty. And that's one of the things we're looking at with the UDO, is eliminating that uncertainty. They're going to be able to read it, they're going to have many options, eliminating the unknowns, is this, or can I, or can I not do this? It's making it easy to understand, laying it out, giving options. If you don't want to do one thing, there might be another way to go about it that might achieve its intent. And having that in your code is very helpful, and it makes you more attractive to development. So I think repealing the special use permit, it's a significant step. And honestly, it puts us a little bit ahead of some other places in Rockland County. Just to be honest with you, we're beyond par with what we're experiencing. So with allowing mixed development. Anything else?
I appreciate you touching on that. And as we all know, with the pandemic, that has changed a lot of what people think of in workforce. And I know that maybe a year, two years ago, we had a constituent come before council about trying to do a massage parlor. You know, you've got that different mindset of entrepreneurs who are looking to do different uses, whether residential or in commercial districts. So I do think this is in line with some of the direction that staff's been tasked with, is trying to look at ways to monitor and make sure it's the growth that our constituents want, along with city councils' priorities, but to also be mindful of trying to ease some of those strategic restrictions to where we are in our business, right?
Absolutely. And in any place where we feel that there's extra requirements that you need a council force to implement those.
I have a comment. I think we all have heard tonight several times about being a retirement community. You know, and this is a perfect example of communities where you can live in an area and do your shopping right there. Especially when we want to become a walkable community. I think it's, I think it's perfect for our community. And we've all been to businesses, whether it be a restaurant or another kind of business that isn't a residential community. And it works great, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Jason, thank you. Public hearing will open at 7:43. To everyone who'd like to speak for the amendment. If there is, is there anyone who'd like to speak against? Public hearing will close at 7:44. What is the pleasure of council?
I'd like to make a question. I'd like to make a question if we approve a text amendment T 2023-12, Table of permitted uses.
Do I have a second?
Second, I'll second.
In discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, next would be consideration of approval of the conveyance of real property located at 129 East Morehead Street, parcel number 182011, Mackton Property Investment LTV, to establish multifamily residential development of a former multi-story warehouse and professional office, incubator space in an existing metal building. The project includes creation of a public parking lot on City-owned parcel number 182009, enclosed for Judy Yarborough, City Marketer, and Summer Wood, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. And I just really want to give a shout out to our city marketer, Ms. Judy Yarborough and Chris Phillips, our Assistant City Manager, who have done an exceptional job working with Mack Williams, our inter economic development director, to try and look at projects to revitalize our downtown area, which I know that's been a directive that council has set out before staff. And I think this is a great step forward to look at residential use in our buildings downtown and also provide that incubator space. I think this is a step forward, and I will now turn that over to Ms. Yarborough to go over this proposal.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Summer Wood, City Manager. As you've heard, we have been working with Mackon Development, and they are very interested in the 129 East Morehead Street, it's not, I'm not doing this on my own, sorry. 129 East Morehead Street, which is formerly known as the Addams Electric property. So what they have proposed to do with this, and we have given them an incentive, economic incentive agreement tonight, along with the requirements for economics incentive agreement, which they do need, but we will go over that. But they are interested in turning the office building into incubator space for small business. And then they will be turning the four-story brick building into studio and bedroom apartments. So it's a great project. It is in the Depot District. And as you all know, we have a fantastic Depot District plan, which is, for people that might not know, it's across railroad tracks on the east side, back behind Scale Street and it would, and Market Street. And it's the warehouse district back there, where there's a lot of empty buildings back there. So this would take that property and turn it into a very viable business and provide downtown living, which is something that we are definitely looking for. We have, Chris has gone over their financial statements, and he can speak on that. But as far as the incentive agreement itself, this, as far as the city is concerned, we would not be investing anything into this. They would be making the entire investment. We would be also be getting a public parking lot out of this project, which would help that Depot District area as well. It will create jobs with the incubator space and with the property itself for the apartments, or studio apartments. And it will meet all the requirements for the tax revenue that should be generated from it. The property is valued at about $152,000, and that parking lot's going to cost right at $100,000 or more to even do that. So you should get back your investment, or your money in taxes, believe me. And the way that this is set up is if there was anything that was not met, they have 18 months to 36 months to five years to complete the project. And they expect to be completed in 36, but they have up to five years to complete it. And that's state regulation for that. So with that, if it did not pan out the way that they expected it to, it would be reconveyed back to the city. Do you got any questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I think we've done a due diligence with this. And I think it's an excellent process of property that's in vacant for quite some time.
It is, it has been. And it would put it back on the tax rolls, which would be very nice.
I should have a comment on that as well. That's going to be a wonderful enhancement to the area. And just very grateful to see that historical building being turned into something that's going to be very, very useful for jobs and people to live. And it's going to be attractive.
It will be. It will be. And it's very, with that Depot District plan, we have the two capstone buildings. So this is at the beginning of the, of the plan, and the Lawsonville project, which we're working on now, to turn into the R S major space and the community kitchen would really help that whole area, and hopefully the developers will come in and follow in that.
I'll go for it, never hurt your back to load.
Absolutely.
And this is the beginning, and I hope it spurs a lot of interest in people who come to that area.
I understand.
Good job.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions, Congress? Now, the public hearing will open at seven fifty. Is there anyone who would like to speak for? The project.
I.
Name of the address.
Lanice Lane, three sixty-five Washington Street, Rutherford. I am working with the developer. I'm part of Mackin, and many of y'all know me. I've been around working with Judy since two thousand eighteen, and I really consider many of you friends, and Reesville kind of my second home. And I'm very excited to do this project. We completed a similar project in Rutherford with a historic garage. So our idea is not to come in small communities and tear down and redevelop new, but to bring new amenities and new assets through renovation of historic assets, which helps you keep the character that makes your town so great and offers you amenities that are attracting, you know, different people from urban areas into these small towns where they don't feel like they're making a sacrifice of giving those up in order to come to a community like Reesville. We know what the benefits are of a small town. You know, I'm from a small town, Rutherford, which is, I don't know, like fourth the size of Reesville. But I know the difference that the kind of incubator co-work space has made just in our town. People are like very surprised by it so far, and it was a nineteen twenties garage that had really been a corner eyesore on a main street. And now people walk in and they're like, oh, my gosh, I feel like I'm in downtown Nashville or downtown Charlotte. And so it's just brought new energy to our community, and we hope to do the same now. Andy Mackin is the owner of Mackin Investments. I've known Andy for over ten years. We've built several companies together and had various successful projects together. He's from a small town in Ireland. And so I'm excited to bring him here, and I want to introduce him too, since many of you know me, so that he can stay while he wants to council.
Yeah, thanks very much for having me. Home address twenty-four Kansas County Station Road, Delany, Canada. I do kind of mean that.
You might have to give a little bit of that.
Absolutely. Judy, kind of other projects that we have, we've done a number of projects, not just in, but I've done back in my hometown in Aragon as well, and I very much conservationist in mind with bringing old apartments back to life and bringing new life into an old building that really should be living on for generations and generations. So I just want to say thank you very much for your opportunity. Hopefully it will go well, and we certainly are forwarding and we're getting on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure to see you tonight, and wish you well.
Thank you.
Say anyone else who'd like to speak for? Is there anyone who'd like to speak again? Say one. Public hearing closes at seven fifty-four. Now, some members, what's your?
Mayor, I have a question for Ms. Lane, if possible. You talked about Rutherford, right? When, have you had people move into your project?
Yes, we have. And believe it or not, we've had just as many locals as we have tourists, because we offer a daily and a weekly rate. So you have some people that are here for extended vacations, and the wife or the husband needs to do a Zoom call, or maybe just needs a break, family time to do some work for those workaholics like myself. And, you know, it's really been a great space. We've had people, there's no contract, so people can do a month, or they can do a year. It's really set up to either help small business owners who can't really afford brick and mortar, but need to be more serious than working from their garage, for example. They can come in, they have, they pay one flat membership fee, and it includes utilities, access to free coffee and snacks, and fax machines, conference rooms. So it really helps them feel like a business and operate like a business. They can receive mail there through some special permissions with the post office. And so it lets them kind of feel like a business and get started as a business, but without the excessive expense that you have with a traditional brick and mortar. We also see a lot of people whose companies actually pay for them to have a space. We have two right now where their companies are paying for them to have a space, even though they can't or work from home, they want to have an option to come into a different space, because, I mean, like most of us, like it was great the first year or so of COVID, but now everybody's like, I'm tired of my dogs asking me to let them out every five minutes, or my spouse or kids bothering me when they see I'm on the call. And so they, it's a space to come, and then also to network and collaborate. So there's been a lot of partnerships that have come out of that, too, where companies go, oh, that's what you do? Well, I need somebody that needs to do that. So it kind of acts as like a little incubator for ideas, collaboration, and all sorts of things.
And to piggyback on what you said, is there an approximate age? I mean, I'm sure it's from.
It's, it's been all over the world. We've had college students say, hey, I do online school, and I need a place to kind of come and do a study group, or attend, you know, night classes or something like that, where it's not possible in their work home, maybe they're in a household where there's multiple generations, and it's really difficult for them to focus on their schoolwork. So a lot of people, I work from home most of the time, but I go in all the time just to focus. And so, I mean, there's so many different uses that we've had people come in and use the space for. There's not really just one person that this is aimed at.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Gives me a better picture.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions, all of you here? All right, thank you.
There's no more questions or discussion, the pleasure of council.
I certainly like saying that.
Good, in discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I'd like to make a request that we take a five-minute break at this time. We will come back. All out of time, eight oh three, eight oh four. Special projects. Consideration of engineering firm and contract approval for Forest Drive pump station project with accompanying budget ordinance amendment. You close at five. Josh Beck, Public Works Department.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Now, we've talked about this particular project actually a number of times now, so maybe we can mandate that I keep it short and brevity. But no, as you guys are aware, we, we have, we are seeing substantial growth in the southwest corner of the, of Reesville. And in order to facilitate that growth, we have a small pump station in the area. That's fairly small basin, but the growth we're seeing there is contributing to that. In order to facilitate that growth, we truly need to upgrade the pump station itself. The good thing is our current evaluation shows that the force needed at that pump station utilizes would meet the capacity, but unfortunately, the existing station itself, which is at the end of Forest Drive, does not have the needed capacity for what's being planned in that area. I know several residents previously spoke of McCoy and, and in the area, and that's the project we're talking about now. The, the current proposal I have in front of me, I want to be clear, is just for the design of the pump station. As, as we previously discussed, my approach, our approach really is to facilitate the design along with the, the design of these other subdivisions, and only after we see, if you will, dozers on the ground, you know, turning dirt and getting moving on their infrastructure, would we then come back to city council and request the construction funding to actually then upgrade the pump station. So this is kind of to work in tandem with those developers and stay aligned with their timeline and show that the city is supporting their projects before they invest in site plans, of course, the traffic analysis that was kind of presented earlier, and those, those sorts of things, because there are real costs. So before you, we, we submitted a R I Q, we sent it to four engineering firms. As with Arca Dollars and everything else, we had several that simply told us that they were, they were just overloaded and couldn't submit for this particular project. So we did have two firms that responded. We evaluated those and felt that Davis Martin Powell Associates was the best firm for the particular project at hand. So I have for you their contract and the recommendations. So the contract amount would be a hundred and two thousand eight hundred for their preliminary and evaluation and their design. Again, there's no C A in that or construction administration, and there's no cost of the actual pump station itself. So we're recommending city council accept Davis Martin Powell as the engineer for this particular project and approve the contract with the amount of a hundred and two thousand eight hundred. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. If not, I'll turn it over to Chris with the actual budget amendment, if you like. Any questions, Jason? Josh Beck. All right, I'll turn it over to Chris.
I would agree as well, Justin, great job. I mean, it's just a budget order that's been paid for in that contract. So if you want to agree to the contract, you, you do the budget order amendment as well, as the funding for the one you made there.
Any questions? What's the pleasure of budgetal ordinance amendment, sir?
I make a motion to approve it. Second.
In discussion. Say no. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay? Next on the agenda, consideration. That's what we just did.
Yeah, you're doing the copper.
Did you want a contract too?
Yeah, you did a budgetary, you did copper.
Pleasure on the contract. Now, the amendment, so we'll do the.
One word.
Second. All right, in discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, consideration of resolution to submit lead service line inventory grant application. You close at six. Josh Beck, Public Works Department.
Thank you. This kind of an interesting request, truthfully. This came out from the EPA early last year, and we've been working closely with, with DEQ and others, including a local engineering firm. As you guys know, Public Works, their responsibility is very clear, it's within the right of way of the city of Reesville. But this request is kind of odd in that it's actually asking us to evaluate the, the service behind the meter and into the home of the, of the, of our distribution system to look for lead service lines. Obviously, most of you are probably aware of Flint, Michigan, and the issues that came from that. And so this kind of stemmed from that particular situation all across the United States, and EPA is asking that all water distribution systems perform this work. The good thing is, is there's been funding for this particular process of evaluating all these connections to our distribution system. And so in order to get that funding, there's a resolution attached for you tonight to vote on. And that does two things, it helps you understand that there is likely some cost to this. The current estimated cost for the city to do this is roughly a hundred and fifty thousand. But through the presentations and, and that I've attended, it looks like a vast majority of that will be approved if we get this application in before all the money runs out. There's just over, by approving this tonight, it will then hit the December one application deadline, and for the December one application deadline, there's a little over ten million dollars available through North Carolina. So though it is running out, obviously, as all municipalities and distribution systems in North Carolina are required to do this, the deadline to submit this information back to EPA, EPA is quickly approaching, and that's October twenty twenty-four. So this is unfortunately, it's not something my staff can handle internally, which is why we're, we're asking for this grant funding to then hire an engineering firm on the back end to help facilitate this work. So we'll actually be working closely with Taylor and Jason and his department to actually go through a lot of our plumbing records, home construction, building permits, to understand when houses were built and when were not. If that's unclear of what the situation may be, then we'll actually begin some excavation at some point, which will be on down the road, once we evaluate all those records, if you can imagine, to determine if there is a concern in that area, we'll notify the resident that they do indeed have lead service, a lead service line, which poses a significant health issue. But this, this resolution, again, helps you, helps understand that there is potential cost to this, and it also officially names Lake Salt, which is our water treatment plant superintendent, as the approved applicant, if you will, of course, submitted this on the city's back. Be glad to answer any question.
And you can meet the December one deadline as far as application?
Yes, the application is loaded and ready, we just simply have to attach this resolution to it upon conclusion of tonight, assuming we are.
And Mr. Beck, the application will be, will we be asking for the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So yes, we, we have to put in that application. We, we actually, they asked several questions, would we consider a loan if, if the, if the actual grant is not approved? We've also answered that as yes, because it would be very low, kind of like some of our other large projects, very low interest rate or zero. So it's kind of asking twofold, but yes, one of the questions in the full application is how much do we anticipate this costing, which is kind of why we've been delayed to get this to you at this point, because we've been working with Blackham Beach to estimate what we feel like this is costing, so we could then provide that in the, in the grant application.
And you might not know the answer to this, but is it kind of like first come, first served, we will give you this amount, and when it's gone, it's done?
Yes, they, they issued about twenty-three million in the, in the previous submission. They're anticipating ten million this, this submission that we're trying to achieve now, and then it will dwindle, I think the state got about forty, forty-seven million dollars. There is a thought that once that runs out, they can request more, but they have to utilize it all before requesting, and they don't know if more will be available once that does run.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. No question. Didn't we not discuss this last month, that I thought that we approved the one hundred fifty thousand? But this is just to apply for the grant? Because I know, I know last month, one of the comments I made is, we better get our application in fast because it's, you know, going to go quickly.
We talked about this on two and two, but I was, we, we kind of, this council, two and two. Any other questions?
Okay. Council wishes pleasure, pleasure on the resolution, something that we don't have to do.
I make a motion, I mean, go see, let's see.
Second.
Motion on the second, in discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, consideration of a capital purchase utilizing prior year excess budgetary funds and accompanying budget, budget ordinance amendment, you close at seven. Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager, Administration Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you all remember when we worked on the current year's budget, or two thousand twenty-three, twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget, we did take out the capital request to balance the budget, but also because we felt like the twenty-two, twenty-three year that we were in the final quarter of, that we were going to have some excess revenue, extra department savings. So that, now we're finalizing the audit, working with the auditors daily to try to get everything wrapped up. As far as along that we're ready to actually discuss those capital items, you'll remember in the budget, in the memo in the packet, the capital items that we felt like we would be able to consider, once the dust settled, was a little over a million dollars, one million dollars, eleven thousand seven hundred. And so we looked at it from two ways, the savings at the department level, dollars that people do not spend, because our department is trying to be conservative, and they do hold some dollars in case, you know, something breaks in the last few days, and so it's sort of dollars that aren't spent every year, and we do a carryover process to bring those dollars forward. We had some pretty decent savings in the last fiscal year, really in our street department. The street department, you all know, spent a ton of time on our street town, did a great job, but that was funded through emergency plan. So the dollars that they had, they couldn't be two places at once. So they saved some dollars in their department that were ready to break forward, to look at some of the capital needs, and of course, some of those our street department needs as well, so those savings are going to be able to go to that department. So about six hundred thousand is what we brought forward to go towards capital items. So that leaves some more dollars that need to be found to be able to do all the capital items. And that came through excess revenues. So when we ended the fiscal year, sales tax came in better than we thought, you know, a year and a half before we did the budget. But the big one was investment revenues. You all know interest rates were at an all-time low for a extended period of time, they finally started creeping up. Well, that happened in the last fiscal year, and so those last few months, we were able to earn some decent dollars on money that we had in the bank. And so between those two revenue sources, there was money there that was not included in the budget. So that's what we're looking at and using now to do a budget ordinance. So I said that the capital list was a little over a million dollars. Well, in the meantime, between the time the budget was adopted and the time it targeted now, a couple of items came up that we wanted to include on the capital list. One of them is a total issued to the police department, actually, the insurance would need twenty-six thousand to replace it. We needed a vehicle for our fire chief, unfortunately, we lost his vehicle, which was near the end of life to begin with, but a freak tree accident took it out, along with his personal behaviors, but we all go back to wanting to have a new vehicle as a active guide. And the police need an evidence incinerator, and then the scales that we're going to put to sanitation to be able to make sure our trucks on their land do are at capacity to limit the number of trips we go, and also not over capacity. There's actually a little more work than what was originally submitted. So once you add, it's another hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. So we're looking at capital of one million, one sixty-five, four hundred. Six hundred thousand is already there for the carryover. And tonight, we're asking you to allocate five hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred dollars to finish out those capital purchases. So it's coming out of fund balance. So at the end of the audits, which will get presented for this year, you'll see total fund balance and general fund decrease, but available fund balance is actually going up. It's going up significantly more than this five hundred and sixty-five thousand. So feel comfortable recommending this to buy the capital request during the budget process. And what we've done, and we've done this for several years now, is sort of earn it before you spend it. You know, at home, you have large items to buy, you can borrow, and if somebody gives it to you, we're trying to do that all the time. You can borrow money, or you can, you know, save a little money, and when you get enough, you can buy it through credit. And that's what we're doing here. We earn these dollars, and now we're going to allocate them to those capital needs. So what we're asking you to do tonight is consider the budget amendment for five hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred dollars, that will go towards this capital.
Any questions, Chris? What's your pleasure on budget ordinance amendment, eight? I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment. We want that council to agree, sir.
Second.
In the discussion. See, nine, those in favor, raise your right hand. Consideration of the employee performance bonus and accompanying budget ordinance amendment, close to eight, Chris Phillips, Assistant City Manager of Administration, Finance Director.
Sir, thank you for the last approval of the amendment for capital. We give a word out to all departments that those capital items are funded now, so they can try to get them, hopefully get them by the end of the year and start using them. Some really good things in there. At the same time, you know, I told you we had an increase in available fund balance projected, we wanted to look at our employees as well. So you all will remember, we initiated a new performance evaluation system for our employees, based on the team concept. We went through and had a group of supervisors create a whole new form that every employee is evaluating on this one form. It's all the abilities that makes a good team member, and we went through that in December, very well, and folks have to evaluate themselves, their supervisor evaluated and admitted, and raises this going forward. That being the first time through, we did learn some things, but we also feel like that our employees are doing a good job, very conscientious job. We've had some good projects put on that they've been able to do. A lot of our folks have been working short. We're not really short staff, but we've had some divisions that have some folks in training, which feels like a short staff until that person can get cut loose. We've actually had a couple of divisions that have been hit really hard with some of the comp problems. So while those budgets are part of the team, they're not there, so our guys and gals are working short. So some overtime they have to do to make up the difference. It's just been a really a team effort. And so while we did have some difference between our top scores on the evaluation and that's our lowest score, we felt like this year, we wanted to do the same bonus for everyone. Right here at the end of the year and having the dollars available, we're proposing to give all of our full-time employees a one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollar bonus. So the one fifty is for our special centennial year. That's another thing that a lot of our employees have jumped in and really had a part of, and we feel like we've done a great job celebrating, raising this hundred and fifty birthday. So we're going to give them this extra one fifty over the thousand to recognize that birthday, and that one fifty will also offset retirement and taxes that have to come off the bonus. So they'll net closer to one thousand dollars with the bonus, doing the extra one fifty. And we're also, likewise, we really value our part-time employees. We have close to fifty part-time employees that provide services for us, that some of them have been with us for a lot of years. And so we want to recognize those folks as well. Since they're part-time, we're recommending half of the one thousand, one fifty as a bonus to them, so five hundred and seventy-five dollars to each part-time employee as well. So the total for those bonuses is three hundred and five thousand dollars. And again, we did have increasing fund balance to pay for most of that, the majority of our employees are housing and general fund, but our water sewer employees also will have bonuses out of the water sewer reserves. So the budget amendment, we actually sent you a replacement budget amendment, I made a correction on it that was sent to you earlier, or late last week. But so the budget amendment is three hundred and five thousand, and it's spread across all the divisions and housing employees. And we'll get this out to our employees, I think, I bet November fourth, or this pretty early. We're going to actually pay them the first four weeks in December. So to be eligible, you have to be on the books on this payroll this week. So if you work for us this week, then you're eligible for these bonuses, if you all agree to pay them the bonuses.
Any questions, Chris?
I have a question, Chris.
Yes.
You said that we currently don't have any shortages in employment. Does that include our fire department and our food department?
I said we don't have a lot of shortages, you know, we don't have any. A lot of our departments are working short, but not because there are openings. But we do have some openings, we had two unexpected early retirees in the police department. So, you know, we've got to hire a police officer, a testable time, to get through the process. So we do have a couple openings there. Our fire department, I know we just brought on a former employee back on, so I think we may have an opening or two still in the fire department. The big thing, you have an opening in the fire department, or if you have a trainee in the fire department, our guys would have to work an extra shift. Every day that you're short, you have to have a person work an extra shift. So it's a little taxing on them. And we have a couple openings, I still think Public Works, we seem to always have at least an opening in Public Works, you know, symmetery level jobs, and very opportunity for somebody to start if they're, that's what I'm looking for a job with. Right now, our openings are relatively low at the current time, but it looks like there's jobs out there. If you want to have.
You know, I've seen the good work that all our city employees are doing, and it's just great. I know we see it, but citizens also recognize it. I haven't had any complaints from citizens, I hope have a lot of good things said. And so the customer service continues to get better and better. And, you know, and I'm very proud of our employees that they continue to grow and to get better. So, hey, I'm just glad we were able to do something for them, because I know we do care.
And we had a conversation the last week, we were talking about, judging something on a scale of one to ten, and there's kind of, there are no tens, there's always rooms of growth, so, you know, you may never have to reach a ten, so we're not going to rest it or exceed it, trying to increase our customer service all the time, projecting.
And Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. Since this was our hundred and fiftieth year for the city of Redsville, the city staff, which is our most valuable asset that we have, they went far beyond what was asked of them. I have been at bouncy houses with a heat index of probably a hundred and ten, I've been in the cold weather, I have been all over the place, and you guys were here. I don't know who came up with the extra hundred and fifty dollars, but I do appreciate that, and I hope with the rest of my council members, we do pass this. What a wonderful time of year to get that little bonus, and it's much deserved. And also, they put together a magazine, they wrote a book in addition to their regular duties, and it's just, I couldn't be more prouder, and thank everyone for what they have done.
If that's it, what about a motion?
I make the motion, let's give it to them, and I am so happy.
All right. We have a motion and a second, in the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
How wonderful.
Thank you, you're welcome. I'll get this one out. Thank you.
Okay, consideration of purchase of property located at three thirty-three Urban Street, adjacent to the Penn House, accompanying budget ordinance amendment, close to nine, William F. McLeod, Junior City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager Wood. I had several conversations with the owner of the property located at three thirty-three Urban Street, which is the, used to be a former residence adjacent to the Penn House, and prior to that, it was a beauty shop. And Mr. Cook, during our conversations, he has offered to sell the property located either at the other street to the city of Redsville, for the purchase price of forty thousand dollars. And the city approves that purchase of the property and becomes budget ordinance amendment, then I can prepare a sales contract, get Mr. Cook to sign, set up a closing date, and get the property transferred to the city of Redsville. So I'm requesting that the council consider the purchase and sell. For Chris, I don't want to separate any toes as far as discussing the budget ordinance amendment, so for Chris, you want to move that. Any questions?
My understanding is that includes closing costs? Does he pay in the closing cost?
He is, the city is paying, the closing costs are going to be next to that. So the request was, his purchase price was set at forty-five, forty thousand dollars. So the five hundred dollars would be, in my best estimate, a little over and above what the closing costs would be, that's where the budget ordinance is going to run out. So he's going to walk away with it. And he needs, we request nine days from the date of closing to remove this personal belongings of the property, which I think may be substantial. So he needs nine days. Any other questions?
Any questions, Chris? You have another question?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes, sir. If you all agree to purchase the property, then budget ordinance number ten, we'll vote it.
I think this property will greatly enhance the Penn House. We have a motion, budget ordinance two.
I make a motion, we approve budget ordinance amendment number ten.
Second. Motion and a second. In the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, you. Next consideration of agreement with Cranfield Summer. Summer. Yeah, Cranfield Summer. LLP, accompanying budget ordinance amendment, close to ten, Summer Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Council, appreciate the opportunity. So this is for contracted legal services with Cranfield Summer. The city of Redsville entered into an engagement agreement with Cranfield Summer LLP in January twenty-nine of twenty twenty. The city of Redsville feels like it's in the best interest of the city to move forward with a monthly retainer for the services with Cranfield Summer LLP, and this would be a flat rate service, and the attached information is in your packet.
This would better serve us in reference to what we have to take care of on monthly basis.
I agree.
Anyone have any questions? If there are no questions, we have a motion.
So moved. Second.
In the discussion. See, you can raise your right hand. Next item on the agenda, consideration of adoption of the state holiday schedule for twenty twenty-four, close to eleven, Summer Wood, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Council. In your packet, you have the state proposed North Carolina state holiday schedule. I think a couple of years ago, the city adopted to follow the state holiday schedule. So in your packet, you'll see those holidays outlined below that are reflective upon North Carolina's state holiday schedule for twenty twenty-four. And I would also like to point out that we do have added a floating holiday. I appreciate Mayor Council allowing us to add that into our budget, so if there is a holiday on here that is not reflective of an employee's want to observe it, they certainly can now have that floating holiday to do such. And then we also do provide a personal day as well.
Okay. Any questions? What's your pleasure on the schedule?
So moved.
Second. In the discussion. Second. In the discussion. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Consideration of memorandum of understanding for Main Street Advisory Board, enclosure 11 B, D R. There's an added handout that we were given after that.
Thank you, General. Um, this memorandum of understanding would be between the city of Reesville and the Reesville Downtown Corporation, which technically is a nonprofit on its own. Um, it does serve in the advisory capacity for Main Street. We are, um, required in the Main Street program to have an employee who works 40 hours a week. And that will be Robin Yott, who serves as our Main Street manager, along with office square manager. And, um, we also, the Main Street recommends this kind of MOU when you have a separate nonprofit serving as your board. So it basically outlines what their responsibilities are and what our responsibilities are. It also outlines that the Main Street program is supposed to operate under a four-point system. And it outlines what that four-point system is. And honestly, Main Street in those meetings is really not supposed to vary for that. If you are looking at doing a project, it needs to lie behind the four-point system. If you want to do a project that's outside that four-point system, then that could become an RDC project, if that makes sense. Um, again, Main Street does advise us to put this together. Now, the one thing about this particular agreement would be this. They are a city board, or should be a city board. And the way that they stand now, they are not technically a city board because they do not follow the city guidelines as other boards do. So with this agreement, you folks would be able to, just like you approved the Main Street champion, you would approve the new board members coming on the board. Um, and that would be for the Main Street Advisory Board. If RDC wanted to have another board member that did not serve on that Main Street Advisory Board, they could. But this would, would streamline the Main Street Advisory Board itself, um, which is what we need to be working through. Do you have any questions?
And the Main Street Advisory Board is part of the RDC, but it's, but it's separate.
But it's, it, it's very confusing, I know. And so it has been very confusing for many years, and we're really trying to streamline it so that there's a clear understanding of what everybody's role is. And this really outlines what everybody's role is.
So how will they, how will change the way they're operating now? Because, um, as new board members come on, that's when they would come before, before us?
Correct. They would still make recommendations like they do now for the board members, and then they would have to be approved by the city council.
Just like we do the planning board?
Just like you do the planning board and the other city board.
So that brings them all in line, like doing the same?
Correct. So that they're all in line, doing the same thing that all the city boards do.
I have another question. So the requirements that we have for the other boards would also apply to our, to this advisory board?
So with this MOU here, one of the one things that we did not specifically state in here, and of course, you folks can make any changes you want to with it, was that, um, they had to be residents of the city of Reesville. I think that is a requirement with the other boards, is not?
Depending on the board and what the vacancies.
Okay. So we left it open. So the way that Main Street looks at this is honestly, is that all the members of the Main Street Advisory Board should be part of the MSD, you know, which is your Main Street area. It's very hard in reality to get everybody from MSD on that board because they're business owners, they're property owners. Some of them are here. Business owners have to be in their businesses every day. So, but we do need a large percentage on that board of MSD members. Right now, we only have three out of 12. So we need to affect some, and that's, that's one of the things that we're trying to do. We're also trying to get them to understand that events are wonderful things. The city does great events, and they don't necessarily have to concentrate on their events all the time. They can be concentrating on the building sample count, building that database, and those kind of things. So that they are more focused on what the Main Street program is really designed to do.
So the advisory board is different than the RDC, so the advisory board has 12 members?
RDC has 12 members, correct. And so right now, the advisory board would have 12 members. Because we're not trying to affect how it is set up right now with RDC. That's not the intent here. It's just to kind of bring it in line with the city boards.
But our other boards have, what's the most, that our other boards have as far as numbers?
It, it varies between appearance, um, and then historic preservation, planning board. It certainly varies. And I know one of the things in discussing with, uh, Liz Param and some other individuals through the Main Street program, I know that Liz Param did an exceptional job, um, and I can't remember if it was Adams, I believe.
Sherry Adams, yes.
Sherry Adams at the RDC's retreat last year. So I know this is something that Main Street has been talking about for quite some time. It's paramount, you know, that we do establish what those rules and guidelines look like. So it's, it's not confusing. So we do have our, um, Main Street Director. We know the rules and expectations, but it's also crucial to note too that, you know, the individuals who are, are serving on this board, you know, this is tax dollars that the city receives through that MSD district. And we just need to ensure that we are complying with all the Main Street guidelines. And I think this is an attempt to do so. And also in respect to the existing members, it's not an attempt at all to realign the board as far as decreasing their numbers. It's just establishing that memorandum of understanding with the city council and the Main Street program that they, the RDC is serving us that way.
And I agree that it would, I think it's important that those members be vested in our downtown, which would be property owners, store managers, employees. Um, but it would be hard to find 12. If it was more like nine, it would be workable, I think. But it would be hard to find 12.
Right. And we've got to do it, you know, kind of one step at a time. It is going to be the recommendation, um, from staff to the RDC board that they look at their bylaws and perhaps reduce that if that's their pleasure.
Thank you.
Yeah, a question. What's council's pleasure?
So moved. Second.
Sorry. In the discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The one of commissioners, enclosure 12. Next, we have public comments. Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm Cliff Harvey, located 901 Country Club Drive. And this is in regard, the boarding house at 909 Country Club Drive. For the record, our neighborhood is strongly opposed to the continued operation of the boarding house at 909 Country Club Drive. And the owner's disregard for the authority of the city to enforce the R20 ordinance. Among many concerns are the 25% boarding house loophole under the R20 zoning ordinance is impossible to monitor. The owners are playing nothing more than illegal gymnastics. Tenant drug activity has resulted in an overdose death this year. Street parking congestion continues. Surrounding property values are being devastated. We repeatedly expressed our concerns to the city, and I know they're working on this problem, but this operation needs to be shut down. Thanks.
We're in our public comments section. Would the two newly elected members of the council like to come forward and introduce yourselves?
First thing, most everybody knows me, Shannon Coats. I just want to say I really appreciate, um, everybody's support during this time. Looking forward to it. Know that's a thing dumped on us to look at in January. So I'm really looking forward to, uh, the experience and helping out, uh, the city of Reesville and working with the rest of y'all. Really appreciate it.
William Martin, I'd like to thank everybody for allowing us here tonight. Thank voters for voting for us. Myself and Shannon, I feel like we're looking forward to working with you guys and working for the better of Reesville. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in public comments? Managers report.
Thank you, Mayor Council. And in respect for everyone's time, I will move very, very quickly. Um, so real quick, I do want to give a shout out to our assistant city majors, Hayward Cloud and Chris Phillips. We have started a new initiative in administration called Walk a Day in Their Shoes. And boy, did we walk into hate in our department shoes. Um, so for the month of October, um, we were able to work with, uh, Chief Farmer and his team. We spent from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the fire department. And I must say firsthand, and I think our fellow colleagues would agree, is they never stop. And it can go anywhere from going and teaching children in a classroom fire safety to going to a small wreck and Mr. Cloud working on the tire to get the fire out to, um, a citizen trapped in an elevator. So just want to thank, uh, our ACMs for their participation in this program. We're very excited to unveil that as we move forward. And thank you to the fire department for being gracious host and allowing us to walk a day in their shoes because their service certainly doesn't go unnoticed. Couple more updates. The National League of Cities Conference starts tomorrow, Wednesday, November 15th, through Sunday, November the 19th in Atlanta, Georgia. Couple sesquicentennial events. Just want to give an appreciation to Mayor and Council and all of our team members on Team Reesville who put the program together for our Veterans Day celebration. Um, also, feel mark your calendars for the Sunday, November the 19th. Star Youth will be hosting the annual Christmas parade at 4 o'clock p.m. in downtown Reesville. And then please don't forget to come out and support our merchants for Small Business Saturday, which will be Saturday, November the 25th of this month. Couple other updates. The Southern Street project, um, Streetscape project is underway. We'll be unveiling some more dates and timelines on that in the next couple of days. But city staff has met, we are in the process of continuing those discussions with the, the property owners and building owners on Southern Street. We're very excited to continue to work on this project as it moves forward. A couple more, um, community development has developed a customer service survey. Community development's created a customer service survey for design professionals, contractors, and owners at the completion of their projects. The inspections department will also have a QR code on their iPad for a quick link to the survey to see exactly what we did and how we can improve, um, our customer service for things we've done right. Um, so that is something that we have unveiled. And then the final thing, I do just want to touch on, um, a couple more dates before I get there, though, is I really want to give a shout out to another pilot program that city staff has been diligently working on, which consists of community development, um, assistant city major Hayward Cloud, assistant city major, um, Chris Phillips, who's over finance, and then also our fire chief, um, Josh Farmer, along with Jason Harden, Neil McKinney, our lead inspector, along with Ms. Judy Yarborough, um, and Josh Beck, and assistant chief Seth Durham. This has been a great program that we're starting to unveil. One of the things that we've noticed is there's a desperate need for housing. Um, as we all know, businesses follow rooftops. So one thing that we are being crucial to look at is how can we look at our downtown area and provide options for property owners or individuals who are interested in opening up businesses in our downtown area? What services can we offer to help guide them through that process? Um, we've actually done two site visits to two potential, um, interested parties in businesses downtown. Our goal is, is unfortunately, we know there's a lot of state requirements in reference to the need for architectural drawings, and that's stipulated by general statutes. However, for a proactive approach, city staff has taken the initiative, along with community development, in a supply, in reaching out to those property owners and doing a complimentary walkthrough of their buildings. So we can assess anything that we notice the city staff based on their vision of the project, what might automatically classify them as going into assembly code or needing a sprinkler system to try and be proactive to where they don't get in the process of buying a building and then spending money on purchasing and then having to go through an architect all to find out they needed sprinklers. So I think this is a great initiative that was trumped up by our community development to look at ways we can be more proactive. So I'm excited to see where that can go with revitalizing our downtown community. And then finally, just a couple more dates. Our Christmas decorations, we will start decorating November 27th through the 30th. Our tree lighting will be Friday, December the 1st, with tree lighting kicking off at 6:10 p.m. Our employee holiday luncheon will be Thursday, December the 7th at the new penthouse location from 11:30 to 1:30. And all city hall offices will be closed during this time. We think that's a great way for our employees to be able to fellowship and just at least have two hours with each other to be able to celebrate the holiday season as we go into it. We've created two new awards this year. It's called the Above and Beyond Award for Exceptional Customer Service and the Teamwork Award. And this is for teams working together to benefit the city of Reesville. We'll also have our Battle of the Cup. The Third Battle of the Cup will be Thursday, November 30th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Uh, we are looking for judges, so Mayor, Council, if you're interested, we have a cookie faking contest. We also have a basketball team contest. And what we're really excited to unroll is our talent show during our halftime performance. So this is a great way to capitalize and interact with our fellow colleagues because without them and all that they do for the city, we would not be a strong team that we are. So with that, certainly appreciate the opportunity to present my report tonight.
Councilmember reports. Mayor Protenbrenn. Uh, Mayor M. Kausner will report this one. Councilwoman Walker.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Due to the length of time, I will also forego my report. But, um, I cannot see in this corner over here. Um, so do we have a representative from, um, Chamber of Commerce this evening? No, I, I can't see in that corner. So anyway, so no report from here.
And Mayor and Council, by my, I apologize. Um, Ms. Diane Sawyer, she did have a, a little bit of a family situation that she needed to take care of. And I told her it would be no issue with, with my handful to attend. So she does extend her condolences. Thank you.
Councilmember Hertz.
I don't report this evening.
Councilmember Dansonell.
Uh, I have a report, but I'll skip some of them. And I just want to say that the chamber did do several building cuttings this month, and they were very well done. And for example, the La Boca Loco, the Men Air Group, uh, and Moving on Faith, which is a transportation company in the area. So they were, they did a very good job of presenting the presentation. And, um, I also attended the Independent Retreat Foundation, where they talked about U X C Rockingham and, um, Coenham working together to serve this area. And I thought that was very, uh, a positive move for Rockingham. And the rest of it, I'll just, oh, two things. The Veterans Day celebration was excellent. And we had a speaker from one of the families that was an employee, and it was, um, it was very touching.
Councilwoman Stoll.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll just give you just, uh, several highlights. The FAD Festival was great. Um, the attendance was wonderful. The entertainment was wonderful. And our city employees, um, Robin and Judy did an excellent job. It was, it was a great day. Um, the second thing was, uh, the ribbon cutting at the high school football field. That's absolutely wonderful. Another reason for us to be so proud. And we are just so, um, fortunate to have that in the city of Reesville. Um, next thing- Next thing was the Chamber of Coffee at the Belmont House. I have to admit, as long as I've lived near Reesville, that's the first time I've ever been in the Belmont House. And it was beautiful. I was very impressed. And then my last thing was the Veterans Day ceremony. It was wonderful. I would just wish our attendance had been better. It was just such a moving day. It pays such a great tribute to our veterans. And some of us did have family members there. Thank you for that.
You mentioned the Belmont House. My granddaughter, every time we drive by, the youngest granddaughter, Kate, she looks at that house and she says, "I want to go in that part." She really admires that house. I'd just like to say that I'm blessed to be mayor of the City of Reesville. And I've got a long list of things that I tend, I'm going to put forward. Also blessed to be working with the best employees in the state of North Carolina. Everybody that we have on staff, I believe, will appreciate it. And I believe we want to make Reesville a better place. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for all you've done. And thank you for all you've wanted to do. And we make Reesville the best place in the world to live. That's all I have.
Board of Board members?
Yes. For the RDC board, Clark Turner of Seven Meddath South Main Street was reappointed to that board. And then for the planning board, Tamara Lipscomb of 2828, excuse me, 2128 Olive Drive. Too much to say that.
But if there is no further business, we will motion through adjournment.
So moved. So moved.
I don't think there will be any discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you all for coming up.